We also appreciate everybody gathering together, gathering together in your conference rooms because we think that that's another way of bringing people together. Now, we know some people can't join us in the conference rooms, but when you are, that allows you to have some more of that face-to-face networking time as well. So let me tell you why the purpose of today, why we're doing this, why we're doing this call. It's a busy time, it's June 13th. Why are we doing this? Well, a couple of reasons we're doing this is for four different things. One is to introduce Brian Shields to us. And Brian Shields, as you know, many of you know Brian, so he needs no introduction. But he's our new Associate Executive Vice President. This is a great opportunity for him, for those of you who may not have connected with him as much, for you to learn a little bit more about him and to hear about his vision and all the great things that he has planned as well as his new role as the Associate Executive Vice President. We're also going to talk about some structural changes as well. And so some of the things that are happening right now that we want to make sure that you all are hearing as it's happening. And so, you know, you could read it in an email, but we know that emails, there's a lot of emails that are coming out. And so we feel like that this is a great way of being able to express why we're doing some of these things is being able to hear directly from me on the why. The third thing, you know, I was, I got a little bit melancholy when I was with the board last week and we were talking about the 12 years of the Midwest affiliate that we've been together as an 11-state affiliate. And so we got together and we said, what are some of the things that we're most proud of in these last, in these last 12 years as the Midwest affiliate? And so we are put together, Jay actually put together a one-slide opportunity and to be able to say, here's a snapshot, and that's all it is, is a snapshot of some of the great things that we've been able to accomplish. And these things didn't happen by accident, they didn't happen by luck, they happened by a lot of hard work and they happened by a lot of what you and your volunteers were doing. And so I want to be able to share that with you as well. And then I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on how we are finishing the year strong. So how are we are doing on finishing the year strong with, gosh, what, 12 working days left? And so how are those 12 working days and how are we maximizing each day? And at some days, we need to be able to have, be able to fit a couple of days of work in that one day to be able to get it all done. And I get it, I'm feeling the same way. And so we're going to be able to talk about that. Now, I know that one of the challenges of this is that while I want to hear from you, we don't want to hear all the background noise that sometimes happens. And so what I've encouraged you to do is if you have questions or comments or thoughts during this transition, what I'd love for you to do is just to put them in the chat box. And we've got Don Nolan and Laura Gore here in the office with me and they're going to be able to share with me some of the things that you all are asking about from a, in the chat box. So while we want to hear from you, we don't want to hear, you know, background noise of those types of things that can make a really great experience not so great because of the background noise. Okay, hey, before I start getting into those four big things that I wanted to talk about, I want to talk a little bit about our friends in St. Louis last night. And did anybody know that the St. Louis Blues won the Stanley Cup last night? It was the first time in the Blues' history that they have, yes, thank you so much, it's the first time in the Blues' history that they have won the Stanley Cup. And so I actually had the opportunity of being in St. Louis yesterday, ironically enough, and we were celebrating the retirements of Barb Briering and Julie Hatterman and their long careers with the American Heart Association. And so as I was over there, I mean, while we talk about, you know, communities going red, I mean, let me tell you, St. Louis was going blue and it was so exciting to see. I was glad and I felt a part of the team because I wore a blue shirt and a blue sport coat and not the same one, but that's almost all I ever wear. And so I was dressing appropriately for being in St. Louis. And as we were talking about the Blues and talking about some of the things that I learned about St. Louis and the Blues, you know, back in January, actually, the Blues were in very, the very last place in the NHL. And so I was thinking about that as people were talking about the Blues and it was like the Blues mania and it all came down to, you know, to game seven of whether they would win the Stanley Cup or not. And you know, you think about this and just six months ago, they were in last place. They were dead last. And did they give up or did they say, ah, you know what, we'll get it next year? You know, we'll work on it next year and we'll work in the offseason and we'll do these things? No, I mean, they didn't do any of that. You know, what they did do is they reinvented their game. They, you know, they overcame some of the obstacles that they were seeing. They pivoted on some of the things that they were doing. They practiced, they trained, they pulled together as a team. And you know, really what they did was they came together to make sure that they, you know, were doing things that they could do right then, that day, and each day subsequent to that to get better and to put a W in the win column and to make sure that they were going in the right direction. And I think, gosh, what lessons can we learn from the Blues? We can learn a lot of lessons and especially with 12 days left, you know, that's what we, in some ways, we need to do. You know, for those of you who have exceeded your goals and are, things are going great, you know, we need to wave the W flag and be excited about that and celebrate and celebrate the great things. For those of you who may not be there and your teams may not be there and what we really need to do is to maybe reinvent and think differently about this and maybe pivot and be an overcomer and those types of things and practice and pull together as a team. You know, maybe even pull your goalie, pull your goalie out of the goalie so that we can be another attacker to make sure that we're attacking this mission, this opportunity. And so that's what the Blues did. And I just want to celebrate with our friends in St. Louis and the great impact that they're making. So thank you for that. All right, well, now I'm going to go on to the first article of business here and that's to introduce Brian. And Brian Shields, as you all know, is our current Executive Director for the Chicago Market. And Brian, what I'd love to do is to have you share a little bit about you, your family, what you enjoy doing, your background and just get, let people get to know you a little bit better.
All right, it's working, here I am. Hello, everybody, I'm Brian Shields in Chicago. I know many of you, I've gotten an email back and forth with many new faces that I'll get to meet here in the new fiscal year and I'm really excited about this opportunity. I shared a little bit about myself in the email after Kevin announced these new roles, but I thought I'd just tell a quick story about, you know, how I got started with the AHA and how my family has grown and changed over those years. So I started with the Heart Association back in 2006, end of August, and I was a youth market director. So really, my first day was also the first day of school for many Chicago schools, which is a very interesting time to start. In addition to that, when I started with the AHA, it was about a week before my wife and I, my then fiance and I bought our first home. About three weeks later, we got married. And so the start of my AHA career was really the start of a whole lot of changes for me and my family. In those 13 years, my wife and I have had three young kids. My oldest Nora will be nine next month, so she was born just a couple of years after I started with the AHA and many of my old youth market friends know this. When Nora was born, we found out soon after that she had a congenital heart defect, atrial septal defect, very treatable and it's been something that has been totally managed throughout her life. But that was a pivotal point for me in that I really, my perspective on the work of the AHA really changed and became more personal. As I shared in my email, you know, we have, we have three kids. My son George is five and my youngest Samantha is four. And so we have a busy household these days, but they're all, they're all out of diapers and they're all out of cribs and that makes our life a whole lot easier. When it comes to my AHA career, as I shared, I started in youth market. I had my territory on the south side of Chicago. And Rachel Gunderson, who is here in the Chicago office with me, was my first manager and I still remember the first school that we recruited and what that felt like. And I remember learning so much in that first role about the AHA pace of business and what it takes to be successful and I really loved that role. I was in that role for about three years before I moved into a leadership role. I became the Vice President in Downstate Illinois where I worked with our team sort of south of I-80 in Illinois and worked in a lot of smaller communities, rural communities and mid-sized markets and learned a whole lot about the passion of the AHA and how that can really transform results within a school and within a community. That expanded to me becoming the VP overall of Illinois within youth market where I got experience managing a much larger team, about 11, 12 fundraising staff. And a couple of years after that, I transitioned into the role that I'm in now as the Executive Director in Chicago, which has been an incredible five and a half years. And I'm going to miss this role, but I'm really excited about the expanded responsibility and opportunity that I'll have.
Great, that's great, thank you so much. And thank you also, Brian, for sharing about Nora. You know, I know that when it becomes personal to us, and so thank you for sharing that. Hey, Brian, you know, what I'd love to hear also is for you to talk a little bit about the new role, you know, and as you see it, that Associate Executive Vice President role. What do you feel like you're going to be focusing on as you stepped into that on July 1?
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. So, and probably everybody knows this, there are five Associate Executive Vice Presidents across the country, so they align with each of our five new affiliates. But two affiliates have had this role, it was called the Affiliate Development Officer previously. And so I've had an opportunity to spend a lot of time with the two individuals in other regions who have been in this role the last couple of years and that's been really helpful. But when I think about turning the clock to July and really what I'll be focused on, you know, I've got some thoughts and visions that'll come out in the months and years to come. But really, first and foremost, there's a whole lot for me to learn from, you know, all of the markets across the Midwest and our new friends from Ohio and Kentucky. And so I'll spend a lot of time in these first couple of months really trying to wrap my arms around what's happening in all of our communities. But when I really think about a couple of the priorities beyond sort of learning the landscape of the Midwest, I think about two things. One is, you know, we have really transformed organizationally from the inside out to be more squarely focused on health equity. And that has changed in so many ways from our organizational structure, the expectation on our Executive Directors to more holistically lead markets, the way that we expect our communications team and our health strategies and our development team to interact both internally and externally. And so I'm really committed to continuing to help the Midwest down that path of transformation. I think when we look at the impact that we can have by making that shift, it's pretty profound and I think we've had a lot of great experiences with that here in Chicago over the last couple of years. So I'm laser focused on that. The second thing I'll share as far as what I'm focused on come July is, you know, we as a Midwest affiliate have all sorts of plethora of opportunities and initiatives that have come down from National that we can capitalize on. I think about how we have built a world-class, core-vitae-giving society that is backed by our team at National. I think about opportunities like Life is Why We Give, the opportunity to invest in kiosks, both CPR and blood pressure kiosks, in communities as sort of a visual and something tangible that can connect with communities. And I think we have an opportunity as a Midwest to capitalize on those even more than we have in the past. Many of those, when you look at kind of how we've implemented those against some of the other affiliates, we've got some ground to make up when it comes to bringing those to life and I look forward to taking a leadership role in that. And then lastly, just sort of big picture, when I think about the future of the Midwest, I think that we have an opportunity in this new era to really become the most productive, the fastest-growing and the healthiest region of all here at the American Heart Association and that's something that I'm committed to being a big part of.
There you go, I love that, Brian, thank you so much for sharing that too. Hey, my last question for you, you know, when we were going through the interview process, one of the things, and I wasn't surprised to hear this, but one of the things that I really enjoyed hearing about and was really appreciated hearing about was when you talked about your values and what you hope to gain from the Midwest values, if you will, and what you find to be keys for us moving forward. Would you just spend just a, you know, a minute or so talking about that, those values?
Absolutely, there are a whole host of things that I've learned from my time here in the Midwest and spending time down in Dallas with our leadership. And some of them have really struck a chord with me. The first is something that I, we talk about a lot in Chicago. Something I really value are staff who invest the time and are curious and disciplined at becoming students of the organization. You know, we are so much more than an organization that funds research and educates people on healthy living. And so if we're talking about the AHA in that way, it is wildly inadequate when you think about the comprehensive nature of the organization. So to sort of keep up and be able to articulate that with our donors and our partners and our volunteers, it takes disciplined students of the organization. And so that's something that I really value with our staff. The second thing that I value is, you know, as we've shifted to a community impact market here in Chicago and as that has begun to sort of change across the country, something I've gained a deeper appreciation for is that, you know, revenue, while critically important, it isn't the end goal, it is a means to the end. And the end goal is really that mission impact. And I think we can't lose sight of first and foremost, really deeply focusing and articulating the impact of our work and then bringing it back to now how do we fuel that mission? How do we fund the mission? And I think following those steps is a key for all of us to be more transformational and more successful. And then the last thing I'll share real briefly is, and this is really pertinent here in June where I know we're all feeling the pressure, is that we are an organization that sets the bar really high. And at least in my 13 years, I've never seen us drop that bar. We always set it high and we continue to strive until the, you know, the clock runs out to achieve those goals. And that's something that I really value and appreciate. I think about long-term sustained success here at the American Heart Association means you're really doing great work and you're good at what you do. And I think that is something that all of us should wear as a badge of honor, that being here at the AHA and delivering these types of results is something that has an impact, you know, far and wide. And that aggressive nature and that fast pace, I think, is something that I've really grown to appreciate and want to continue to foster in my new role.
Perfect, that's great, thank you so much, Brian, I appreciate that. And I'm looking forward to working with you as well. I know that all of us are looking forward to working with you and, you know, learning more from you as well as we create this new structure. So speaking of structure, we're going to go to a PowerPoint, we're going to try to go to a PowerPoint on this. And so this is what the structure is actually going to look like. And so what I, you'll see a lot of familiar names on here then too. Yep, good, as you'll see a lot of familiar names on here as well. You'll also see the map with our friends in Ohio and Kentucky up there added. But if you take a look at the, this document, what you'll see is that we've got Brian's position, since that is a new position, that is the only new position really at the senior level that we are adding. And so that is a new position, so that's why his position is in yellow. And so if you could look at the individuals that are all on that same line with Brian, it's Jeff Willett, Dr. Willett, our Senior VP of Health, Heidi, of course, our Senior VP of Corporate Ops, Latanya Daniels, our Senior VP of HR, Bill Repke, our Senior VP of Youth Market. And I'll move over to Nancy, can't see me, I'm sorry, to Nancy Wolf, our VP of Mission Advancement. And then all of those, and Nancy does have a dotted line. We went ahead and put it as a solid line there just to make sure that we could, we could be able to show that. And then you see that open position and that's obviously the position that Brian once was in. And so we are going to be doing a position for, a search for that and there'll be more information coming out in the, in the coming days and weeks. Then if you go down to Brian's direct reports, you'll see some familiar faces around there and some familiar names. And so we have four SVPs of, you know, in those, Angie Galindo, Jen Hauck and Katie Tom. Those SVPs will have regions that will have markets that will be reporting up to them. And so we're really excited about those, the way that they're going to be continuing to lead their, their communities and make a big impact in their communities. And then you can also see a couple of markets. And these are two of our community impact markets as well. Holly Messick in the Twin Cities and Brenda Houston in Columbus will be reporting directly up to Brian as well. And then Tony Troutwine will be our SVP of Development Operations as well. And so some of those individuals were direct reports to me and now they'll be direct reports to Brian and certainly focusing on those opportunities that are all field focusing. And so I'm really excited about that. There'll be more information that we'll be filling in on each one of those as well and what those, their direct reports will look like. And we'll try to be having that in the next week or so as well. So I did want to, as I, as I told you about, I want to share with you a little bit about some of the things that I'm most excited about, that from this past 12 years that we have been in this current Midwest affiliate. And I'm going to be looking over here, so that I, shoot, I'm going to be looking over here so that I can see this, had a little issue there then too. Make sure that you're large glass of water, is it right there on the desk then too, folks? So here's what we're going to do is I'm going to talk a little bit about the Midwest affiliate accomplishments over this past 12, 12 years. And so here's the, I'm not going to read all of these, but I do hope that it's large enough for you all to read, to read many of these as well. And so a couple of things that we have here that I'm most proud of certainly is advocacy. You know, I love the fact that in the last 10 years or so, we have been either number one or number two in the last 10 years and truly leading the way. Now look at CPR as well, you know, that we, in the last 10, 12 years, we have trained 14.4 million people in our 11 states then too. And also we've got CPR as a graduation requirement in the, in 10 of our 11 states. We're still working on Nebraska and I know that that's going to be able to happen too. Think about this, though, 600,000, 600,000 students are trained each year, each year with regard to CPR. And we know that young people are typically not worrying about, gosh, can I be sued for this? And what's that look like? You know, they're willing to jump in and to begin that and to begin calling 911 and pushing hard and fast in the center of the chest and they get it. And so that's really exciting. You all know that next one down there is rural, rural health. And rural health is really important to me, I grew up in a small town, as you all know. And so that's something that I'm always looking at from a lens, not only in rural communities, but also in our largest markets as well, in the inner-city urban core. But certainly making sure that we're focusing on our smallest communities also. And one of the things I'm really proud of is what the relationship that we have with the Helm State Charitable Trust, that $36 million that we have there. Then take a look also at our amazing social media. I try to stay up on social media, I'm learning a lot. I'm learning a lot from Laura and Don and Jamie and others about social media, Jen. They're trying to keep me, trying to make me relevant on social media. But think about the impact that we've been able to make at low cost or no cost through our social media. And then of course, you know, I'm inspired by our research and the fact that we have $307 million in research that we've been able to fund in our 11 states in the last 12 years. You know, and that's because of your great work, being able to generate those funds. And then, you know, the great things that we're doing from hypertension and cholesterol, we have 28 million, 28 million individuals are being impacted by those programs. And certainly our community impact model that we have of the policy systems and environment changes that we've got, you know, it's exciting to be able to see what we've had. So while I'm excited about the last 12 years, I'm also inspired about what this team with Ohio and Kentucky can do in the next 12 years and beyond. And so I just thought it would be good for us to make sure that we're celebrating some of the great things that we've been able to do. And so I hope that you all are also excited, as excited about being able to celebrate those, those wonderful wins. And as I said earlier, they didn't happen by accident. It took a lot of hard work, it took a lot of wonderful volunteer and staff partnerships, it took a lot of dedication and it took relentless work to be able to make this happen. So thank you all for that and the impact that we're able to make. Okay, we have cleaned up in my desk now then too, really excited by that then too. People were bringing in stuff as well and to help mop up this huge glass of water that I had and now that I don't have anymore then too. So, so let me tell you about one other resource that is just brand new and available to us. And I love this, this sheet and we call, I call it our mission statement. And this is something that we are, that we have created. Actually, Jay Matts, our friend Jay Matts has created these. And we've gone through about 172 iterations of this, I think. Actually, I think Jay just texted and it was 173 iterations of this document. But I'll tell you, it's worth it. And whenever I go into a community, this is what I print off. So if I go to Chicago, I print this off for Chicago. Because while I've worked for the Heart Association for a long time, sometimes it all kind of jumbles up in my mind and I really don't know, you know, kind of what's happened with that. And so I want to make sure that I know the latest and greatest and the information of what's happening in Chicago. The one that you happen to see is where I am right now in Kansas City. And so you can see in this document, I'm going to again look over here a little bit then too, but you can see in this document that how we're able to bring our mission to life. And we're talking about impacting Kansas City at the very top, that's the first thing. And that's what our donors want, they want to know what's the difference that we're making locally. And so there you can see how we're changing lives and saving lives through CPR and the number of people there and quality healthcare with our Get What's A Guidelines program and how we're advocating for health and how we're investing in youth and how we're focusing on funding groundbreaking research. And then we show the pie chart, you know, which is a great way of being able to say how we're using their dollars and being aware of how we are a nonprofit and how we're investing those dollars and that we're not taking that lightly. We are truly using it as an investment. And then as you kind of see along the side then too, we've got a picture of a story of real people who are being impacted. Some of these and some of the markets are young people and children. And, you know, so what we're trying to do is to find a relevant story that will tug at those heartstrings. You know, I oftentimes talk about Colton and the reason I do and I show that picture of Colton because that picture's worth a thousand words and we believe that here as well. Then on your backside, which is actually on the right-hand side of here, you know, we can talk about life expectancy. And, you know, we really kind of talk about ZIP code matters. You know, when you think about, and in Kansas City, those two ZIP codes that are reflected there in the Blue Hills and in the Armored Hills area, they're about three miles apart. You know, really short distance, but you think about from that short distance that there's a 14-year difference in the life expectancy in those two communities. That's not right. But we've been able to look at this and target this in each community and each state. So all of our, all of our communities with boards, with volunteer boards, we have one of these created for them. All the areas that we don't have boards or maybe for youth market that's working throughout a state, we have a statewide impact and they're able to pull two different ZIP codes from the state to be able to say, that's not right, that doesn't matter. And on that 14 years lost that you see there, you know, what I love about this is it says, here are three things that are different in every community. In Kansas City, it happens to be what we're doing on healthy food access and what we're doing on e-cigarettes and vaping, which is relevant in the news all the time and what we're doing on hypertension. If you want to lower your risk factors of stroke or of heart disease, you're going to focus on your blood pressure. And so these are ways that we're making a difference in Kansas City or in Chicago or in Omaha or in St. Louis. And so I encourage you to use these. So they're going to be coming out, they're live now, they're going to be, we're going to be sending them out in the polls. And then I'm also going to be working with Don, who manages our website, to be able to say, how can we give a little bit more prominence to these as well? So you don't have to look as much for them. And so she's nodding her head right now, so she'll be on that, about being able to have a little bit more prominent impact of that. Here's what I'd love for you to do, I'm going to be sending, you know, printing these off for the communities that I'm in. And so I encourage you to do that same thing and keep four or five of them in your portfolio because I just was at a, at a chair orientation, at a chair recruitment opportunity. The only thing that I used was this document. And, you know, it brings our mission to life. And so sometimes I've seen people who create them on their own and it's, quite honestly, it's not as good. And so this is a great, relevant impact that we're able to do and how we're moving the needle on heart disease in your community. So thank you, Jay, and thank you for, everybody for all your great work on this as well. All right, now, I think we may have to have, there should be something that you says hide stage, is that right, Laura? So if you want to, if you're not seeing this, you want to go on, you can see hide stage and then that will be able to bring, bring me back up in the full screen then too. Learning a lot about this, folks. All right, so I want to talk to you a little bit now, shift gears just a moment and talk with you a little bit more about how our efforts to continue to align ourselves to be of the community, what we're doing to be of the community. And I wanted to let you all know that we're going to be expanding our market-based structure to include our communication staff in this effort. You know, last year, we went to our health impact staff that would roll up to our executive directors. And, you know, we've seen great successes from this, you know, we're collaborating more, we're working together more, you know, we, individuals from the health side are actually going on a lot of the calls and the visits for sponsors and vice versa. We're bringing our fundraising staff in and helping them to leverage different opportunities that we have in the community. And so it's working. Now, has it worked perfectly? Of course not, I didn't expect it to. I knew that there would be times that we would stub our toe in this process. You know, but the good thing about when you stub your toe, while it hurts, like the dickens, when it happens, it doesn't hurt for very long and you'll learn something about it. You learn to move that chair and you learn to walk around that table. And that's kind of what we learned also with this process. And so while it hasn't worked flawlessly and it hasn't worked perfectly, we're learning more about it. And we're going to continue to get better at that. And I think now that as we add the communications team in here with the health strategies team and with the corporate development team- and with the corporate development team, all under the executive director in one market. And that's how externally all other organizations are focused and, and how they are structured. And so this is a much better way for us to do this. Now, I will say, you know, we're, we're looking at different opportunities for us to make sure that we are being of the community. This is gonna be happening on, as of July 1st. And, you know, the communication staff have always been a part of our development teams and have always been a part of our market teams. And so this transition, in my opinion, gosh, should be seamless. You may be thinking, I gosh, I wonder what that means about Jen Reema Schneider and Laura Gore and Jamie Schneider, who's been kind of managing and leading these teams in the past. You know, they're gonna be, continue to be a great assets for us then too. You know, and leading and providing strategy and consultation and working directly with those, those markets. And so I'm excited about their roles and the impact that they're able to make. I've mentioned Jake several times then too, Jay Matts, you know, what's he gonna be doing? And so he's still gonna be providing color commentary on calls like this, I'm sure, Jay. But he's also gonna be, continue to do the creative for us as well. And so a lot of the creative work, the things that you've already seen today, that I'm real excited about. Now, we also are gonna have two, you've been muted for a reason as well, Jay. We also have two individuals, Chrissy Meyer and Julie Lay. Those individuals will provide regional support for some of our field operations in our outstate areas. Those individuals will report directly up to Jen and Laura respectively. And so I'm really excited about their, their important role also as we move to the future. So I'm excited about these changes. And I, I know that again, change is difficult sometimes and we're going through lots of changes as an organization. But we're gonna continue to over-communicate, we're gonna continue to work together, we're gonna continue to make sure that we're collaborating, we're gonna make sure that we're continuing to build trust, those types of things that are gonna build us together and propel us as a team in the future. All right. Another thing that I wanna move to, I turned my page a little bit too early as well. Another thing I wanna talk a little bit about is I wanna share, I put, we're talking about Brian recently and his new role. And I wanna share with you something about Jeff Willett. And as some of you know, gosh, Jeff's been on the, on, on board with us in the, at the American Heart Association and Midwest affiliate for the last 10 months or so. And he's made a huge impact. I've, I've loved some of the things that he's been able to create and how he's really helped us in the future and, and to see down the, the vision with fresh eyes and with fresh opportunities and, and a fresh approach. And I haven't been the only one that's seen that. I know that you all have seen that as well. But another group of individuals that have seen that is the National Center. And I actually didn't, I knew it wasn't gonna take very long before the National Center to be able to see in Jeff, everything that we saw in Jeff. And so Jeff is now, Dr. Jeff Willett, has now been named the American Heart Association's National Lead of E-cigarette Strategy Integration. National Lead of E-cigarette Strategy Integration. So in this role, Jeff is still gonna be the, the SVP of Health here in the, in the Midwest. But he's gonna also be having a couple of different hats that he's gonna be wearing. So he's gonna be representing the National Board of Directors when they're talking about e-cigs and vaping. He's gonna be able to go down there and talk about that. He's gonna be able to, to talk about different things. You know, he'll be in fact, joining the Southwest Affiliate Board Meeting coming up because that's an important part of what we're doing. Now, you all know, I've introduced Jeff and we've talked about Jeff. We did the town hall tour together and Jeff's great as well. But Jeff really is our expert on vaping and e-cigarettes, not just for the Midwest, but for everybody, you know, for nationally. Jeff has led tobacco prevention efforts in Ohio and in New York. And he's also directed research on e-cigs, e-cigarettes and vaping while he was at the Truth Initiative. And so, you know, he's, he's been great and will be a great leader for this. And I'm just excited for him and excited for what that means for the Heart Association as well. All right, so congratulations, Jeff. I'm gonna switch gears a little bit now. And I wanna talk a little bit about finishing strong. Finishing strong and what that means. So first, let me give you kind of a recap of where I sit with regard to the, with regard to the Midwest and where I'm seeing things right now. So, you know, I'm really proud of a lot of the work that we've done and I know that we've got a lot of work to do in the next 12 days. And so let me just give you a recap, you know, again, just a thumbnail sketch of a few of our priorities. I'm not gonna be listening, listing everybody, but just a few of the priorities. Communication staff, they have done a great job. They have hit or exceeded their social media goals and their impression goals across the board. And so congratulations, give a shout out, give a pat on the back to your communications colleagues who are sitting next to you right now. Quality and Systems Improvement, QSI, sometimes the kind of the most difficult thing for laypeople to know what we're doing and it's important, important work. It's making sure that hospitals are treating patients in the ways that, that will save their lives and by, by the proven research-driven, the guidelines of the American Heart Association. They have exceeded their goals across the board. They've done an amazing job with Get With the Guidelines and with Mission Lifeline. And so congratulations, give them a shout out and a pat on the back. We've got a ways to go in some of our health measurements and check change control and target VP, but I'm really excited about what we're doing there as well. We're still also finalizing some of our policy systems and environment. You hear our, our PSE wins. And you all have done an amazing job as I continue to get these successes and hear about them at the local level. Or, you know, here's what's happening in Milwaukee and here's what's happening in Detroit and Chicago and, and the Twin Cities. You know, I'm inspired and it's, and you can see we're making a difference. We've still got some work to do, that's to be expected. And so I appreciate the way that we are, are, are moving that forward. You know, youth market, you know, I'll, I'll put it out there and say, you've heard me say this before, it's been a challenging year for our youth market colleagues. There's been a lot of changes with regard to youth market in our 40th anniversary of youth market. You know, as I think about our youth market staff, they did everything that they could. And I'm so proud of the work that they've done and how they're leading the way and how they're, you know, reaching every day with a smile and a, let's do this, let's make it happen. And so I really appreciate that. You know, they have, they've had a challenging year. And so here's what I would say, while they're pulling out the stops, they still have about a half a million dollars to raise and schooled out in most of our locations, still have about a half a million dollars to raise in these last 12 days. And here's what I would say for, when you have a challenging year, one of the phrases that I really like saying is that a setback is a setup for a comeback. And that's what our youth market staff are prepared to do next year is to have a comeback. And so I was just meeting with many of them yesterday and they are inspired, they are excited, they are ready to go. And they're not wasting any time this summer as well. They're making a difference this summer also. I'll tell you, on our corporate events then too, and some of our markets, I'm really excited by Team Des Moines, Team Milwaukee and Team Outstate Michigan as well for hitting their goal this week. All of them have hit their goals, have reached their projections. I know there's a couple of markets that are right on their tails as well. And so I'm excited about the work that those, that those markets are doing and I can't wait to celebrate with you all when that happens as well. You know, but when I look at our corporate revenue, we still are about $8.7 million away from our projections. We had $2 million that was gonna be closing this week. And, and so there's lots of work that still needs to be done. And I know that you all are, are working so hard on making that happen. And listen to this, we have 40 six-figure asks, so $100,000 or more, we have 40 of those. That's worth about $9 million. And so if we could get those to happen, if we could get those to, to close, imagine where we could be. And so, you know, I want us to make sure that we are thinking about how we can, you know, think about the blues for just a second. You know, if you've exceeded your goal, if you've exceeded your projection, make sure that you're shouting out and being able to say congratulations, like they're doing in St. Louis today. And if you're not where you need to be, then make sure that we're also looking at opportunities to reinvent and collaborate more and to work together as a team more. And so those could be great things for us to do in the future. All right. I wanted to also say, we have three special events left this year, all this weekend. And as you know, some of you have been very generous. I appreciate what you all have done then too. I'll be at the Kansas City Heart Walk on Saturday, I'll be walking. I've, I've exceeded my goal and I really appreciate that. And now I'm really working on trying to go over my goal and to see how much I can go over that. And so if you'd still like to donate to my Heart Walk efforts, this is a shameless plug. And I'm just asking for your support. I'll send you out another, another opportunity to be able to give if you'd like that. No pressure, but I'm still matching every donation and this is your opportunity of making me pay. And there's a couple lunches that are online then too, if you're interested in that. All right, we're coming to a close and we're doing pretty well on time too. If you do have questions or comments then too, as I'm talking about these last, last few minutes, make sure that you type them in the chat box then too, if you have any questions and I'll try to get to them. Okay, we've got 12 days left, right? We know that. And so I wanna talk with you a little bit about what you can do in a day and what's possible in a day. So I wanna tell you a story. Did you know that Dolly Parton, and I know we've got some huge Dolly Parton fans out there. I know we have a couple of huge Dolly Parton fans in the room here. We have Dolly Parton, actually in the same day, in the same day, Dolly Parton wrote two number one songs in the same day. She wrote, "I Will Always Love You." That was one that she recorded and made famous. And then she also, Whitney Houston did it as well and even made it more famous. So it hit, it hit number one twice in two different genres. And then she also wrote "Jolene" the same day, the same day. You think about what that has done for Dolly Parton, of what she was able to do in, in a day. And so after she wrote the first one, I don't know which one she wrote first, but after she was writing the first ones, you know, she didn't say, okay, gosh, I'm gonna, you know, take the next 10 years off. You know, she said, I've got other ideas, I've got other opportunities of making an impact and I'm gonna do just that. And so then she wrote and wrote out the, the music and the lyrics of the next one then too. And so in a day, she did two number one songs, two. Oh yeah, I could work literally, folks, I could work for the next 100 years and I'll never write a number one song. And remember, many of you may not be able to do that either. But I'm inspired by what we can do in a day. And I'm inspired by what we can do in 12 days. And so what I'm asking of you all is to make sure that we are being relentless in the next 12 days, that we are making that one more call or maybe two or maybe three more day calls. You know, I, I think about the work that I get done before I go on a week's long vacation. I get, I get about, you know, three days of work done in the day before I leave on vacation. And probably for some of us, that's what we're gonna have to be working like in these next 12 days. We're gonna have to get three days of work done in every day to make sure that we are leaving it all on the playing field, that we are reinventing, that we are working together, that we are collaborating. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm not asking for two hit songs, I'm not asking for one hit song. What I am asking for each of us to do is to, to collaborate and to innovate and to believe in yourself and to encourage each other and to work together as a team and to find a way to reach our projections and goals for the future. That's what we need to be focusing on. We need to be that relentless force. And I believe in you and I'm counting on you. Before I go to any questions that we may have then too, I, I want to offer a, a quick shout out. This will be among the last times that we'll be able to recognize and thank Linda Daly. And some of you were on the call early, Linda and I were kind of bantering back and forth on what she wanted to do this summer and then probably what she's gonna be doing in retirement then too. But next month, in July, Linda's going to end her 29 career, 29-year career with the American Heart Association. And I, I have been blessed to be able to work side by side with Linda and call her a colleague and call her a friend. And I just wanna say, Linda, thank you for the work that you've done. We've been able to celebrate Linda at a couple of different venues and they've been great. And so Linda, thank you so much for your leadership, for your passion, for your commitment, for your dedication. And as Laura says, oh, the places that you'll go. And so Linda, I want to thank you for leading with your hands in so many different ways, where you've rolled up your sleeves, where you've gotten right in there with individuals, where you've led with your head, with that great, you know, fundraising mind and collaboration and relationship building mind. And then also what's most important to you though, and to all of us, is that you've led with your heart. And that's what we all love. You know, we love the way that you lead with your heart. And the way that you make us feel good and the way that you make us laugh. So thank you, Linda, we're gonna miss you a lot. Okay. Okay. So, all right. Hey, don't miss out on our July Town Hall. That will be the first one where we're gonna be able to introduce our friends and colleagues from Ohio and Kentucky. I guarantee you that we won't be spilling large amounts of water during that one then too, which is all my fault. They acted like it was theirs, it was really mine. And so if you do have any feedback for us on this format, we'd love to be able to hear. You can either reach out to Laura Gore, who's kind of producing this whole thing, so thank you, Laura. If you wanna be, or you can reach out to our Pulse inbox, but you can go directly to Laura and she'd be happy to hear what you're thinking then too. And so again, I just wanna say thank you for the work you're doing. And I'll say it again, you know, I'm counting on you, I believe in you, not asking for two hit songs, but we are asking to make an impact, so let's do it. Any questions that we have? All right, we've done a good job of answering your questions then too. Thank you all so much for your leadership, for your passion, for your dedication and we'll stand adjourned, folks. Thanks very much. Thanks very much.